Abington School Committee for Tuesday, March 27th, 2012. Will you please stand and put the flag salute? And also if we could have a moment of silence afterwards. One of our former principals at the Woodsdale School, Nancy Moran, passed away last Friday. So if you please remember her in a moment of silence. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know that.
Having lots of parents and kindergarten students and kids that are a lot younger, we're going to take things a little out of turn and we're going to bring in the kindergarteners for their presentation of The Very Hungry Caterpillar.
Hi. It's gonna take one minute to set them up. Over here somehow. Alright, come on you guys and find your seats that you sit in. We did it at school. Theo. Theo. Right here, Theo. Sorry, I'm having a little difficulty. We're not used to this spot. Oops, sorry honey. Cake. Getting a group of kindergarteners into the room and into that corner the way you did
is miraculous in itself.
This is a very exciting night for us. Alrighty, and I will tell you that I usually have the very much needed help from Mrs. Barash who is keeping the PM kids contained. So you might see me flying around a little bit, but just about everyone came and that's in the program. I did pass a few programs around. We have a few that are not here, so we had to take a few parts out and switch a few things around. So you might see a couple of people get the puppies, but we're ready to go. Alright. Thanks for letting us come and put on our show. It's called The Very Hungry Caterpillar.
By Eric Carl.
In the light of the moon, a little egg lay on a leaf. One Sunday morning, the warm sun came up and pop, out of the egg came a very tiny, but very hungry caterpillar. He started to look for some food. On Monday, he ate through...
One apple.
But he was still hungry.
On Tuesday, he ate through...
Two hairs.
But he was still hungry.
On Friday, he ate through...
Five oranges.
But he was still hungry.
On Saturday, he ate through...
One slice of chocolate cake. One ice cream cone. One pickle. One slice of Swiss cheese. One slice of salami. One piece of cherry pie. One sausage. One cupcake. And one slice of watermelon.
That night, he had a stomach ache, but the next day was Sunday again and the caterpillar ate through...
One ice cream cone.
And after that, he felt much better. Now, he wasn't hungry anymore and... He wasn't little anymore. He was a big fat caterpillar. So, he built a small house called a cocoon around himself. He stayed inside that cocoon for more than two whole weeks. Then, he nibbled a hole in the cocoon, pushed his way out, and...
He was a beautiful butterfly.
That is really, really hard. We made the props, we put them through a laminator, which was really exciting. And now they get to take their props home, which they've been waiting for. So, thank you so much. I'm so glad so many people could come and bring them. Only a couple couldn't come, which is so wonderful. And that's it. We're done with our caterpillar. I do have one more show, of course. We've done four. If you can go find your family that you came with, and it's gonna sound terrible, but if you can make your way, that way I can get the other ones in.
Just quickly, can I just make sure that everybody knows that it is live on cable, which means it'll be rebroadcast for those people that couldn't be here tonight. You can always DVR it, and you can watch yourself on TV. Nice job. They got to check the cable company's schedule, I'm sorry.
That's okay. She's fine. She's fine. Alright. Alright, thanks for letting us come do this show. It's called The Very Hungry Caterpillar.
By Eric Carl.
In the light of the moon, a little egg lay on a leaf. On Sunday morning, the warm sun came up and pop, out of the egg came a very tiny and very hungry caterpillar. He started to look for some food. On Monday, he ate through...
One apple.
But he was still hungry.
On Tuesday, he ate through...
Four strawberries.
But he was still hungry.
On Friday, he ate through...
Five oranges.
But he was still hungry.
On Saturday, he ate through...
One slice of chocolate cake. One ice cream cone. One pickle. One slice of Swiss cheese. One slice of salami. One piece of cherry pie. One sausage. One cupcake. And one slice of watermelon.
That night, he had a stomach ache, but the next day was Sunday again and the caterpillar ate through...
One ice cream cone.
And after that, he felt much better. Now, he wasn't hungry anymore. And he wasn't a little caterpillar anymore. He was a big fat caterpillar. So, he built a small house called Cocoon around himself. He stayed inside that cocoon for more than two whole weeks. Then, he nibbled a hole in the cocoon, pushed his way out, and...
He was a beautiful butterfly.
This is a very, very exciting night for you all. Thank you so much again. They were just as tired as the other group and they have less kids, much less. So, some of them had to do two parts. Boys and girls, I will bring your food to school tomorrow and I will give it to them because I know you're dying to have it at home. And you could go find your buns and that.
Great job.
It was on TV, so be looking for yourself on TV.
Thank you. Probably for the viewers at home, we can at least now, I want to publicly acknowledge Ms. Fitch and Ms. Barash and all their parents and students for a job well done. And Dr. Rich. I couldn't thank them until they left the room sadly, but I'll send them a note communicating from the school committee how much...
Yes. Alright, are there any hearing visitors that wish to be heard tonight? Seeing none, we need reading and approval of all records. Need a motion to approve the minutes of March 12th, 2012 as presented. Motion by Ellen, second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Need a motion to approve the executive session minutes of March 12th, 2012 as presented or amended. Motion by Trish, second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Motion to approve the minutes of February 28th, 2012 as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, yes, we will bring up Dr. Thomas, the Assistant Superintendent for Pupils' Personnel Services.
Thanks Jim. The first item is going to be the proposed 2012-2013 school calendar with professional development days. That's under unfinished business. And as you will recall at the last meeting, I requested consideration for the addition of one more half-day, and tonight I'm requesting approval of that. We discussed at the last meeting that we currently have seven half-days and one full day, that we are asking for an additional half-day, which will give us one per month, with the exception of June, to be able to meet the needs of professional development and also the requirements of state initiatives and district initiatives. And as we discussed last month as well, is that we have a variety of topics that will be taking place at every building next year that will go from data teaming to MCAS to NEASK to educator evaluation tool, all of the above that I will be sharing more specifically with you before the close of this school year. So any questions before I ask for a motion for approval?
Just one thing, can we add, do we know what the graduation date for next year will be, or do we figure that out as the year progresses?
No, it's published well in advance. I would have to check with Terry because we're required to have that graduation within a certain number of days of the last days, of the last day for the seniors. And off hand, I'm not... Yeah, it is published on the green calendar that goes home, but we could find that out for you.
Yeah, well, that's fine. I just want to give the parents as much notice as possible because of, you know, obviously parties and stuff like that.
Right.
They'd like the book as early as possible.
I'm guessing, would it be if you look at the calendar and you base it on this year, Teresa, would I be right with maybe June?
I'd hate to guess.
Or would that be...
Guess. As long as we get it out at the beginning of the year, you know, that's fine.
Or maybe it's the week before.
It's usually the Saturday after Memorial Day, usually.
Okay, so Saturday before.
But it's been on Memorial Day weekend before?
Right.
Yep. Because it's a certain number of days from when the seniors are released, so I just, I'd want to double check that to be sure.
That's fine. I don't want to hold it up on that, as long as you guys get it out on the green bulletin.
Yeah. So any questions?
So we will move to eight half-days and still one full day.
Correct. So in the full day this year, as opposed to last year, we had it in October, which was on the 31st, but this year, we will be scheduling that on Election Day, which will be November 6th.
Which...
Which has been common for us here in Abington, and a lot of that is because of parking.
Right. And also, we benefit from being able to share professional development experience with other districts that have to do the same thing because of the safety concern around people voting and the building being in operation, just with cars moving around alone.
Great, so...
Okay. Need a motion to adopt the 2012-2013 school calendar as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Tom, second by Ellen. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you.
Great, thank you. The next item of business under my section is actually the Teaching and Learning Strategic Action Plan, and I'd like to start by thanking our committee members who were Teresa Sullivan, Amy Scolaro, Roseanne Kaposka, Kathleen Blumstein, Elise Goodman, Lori Corner, Mary Lu Wales, Karen Bonner, Elizabeth Gonzalez, Diane Silvetti, and Meg Doherty. And this committee worked to really take a look at teaching and learning and align it with what our focus was through our strategic planning days that you were involved with, many of you were involved with. And the focus is enforced to improve student performance through curriculum instruction assessment, and then we had three strategic objectives. Provide rigorous and relevant curriculum instruction in an optimal learning environment was number one. Number two was analyze student performance data from a variety of sources to make informed decisions. And then number three, our last one, was to commit time and resources for meaningful collaboration and high-quality professional development. I know that you've had all of this paperwork ahead of time, however, I'd be happy to go through the action steps, those of you that might find it beneficial, or I could answer questions if people would rather me do that.
I just have a couple of questions.
Great.
Under the first strategic goal, second action step, meet with various groups, highlight accomplishments, and communicate vision challenges. Now, under the indicators of accomplishment, I'm just wondering, how many number on the first page, second down?
That's not how it should be presented. That's how it represented for the last meeting.
Oh, sorry. I screwed up?
No, that's okay.
Got the wrong one?
No, it's just the teaching and learning one, first was the committee.
I still have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Under, to improve student performance through curriculum instruction assessment, I'm just wondering on the first action step at the data teams created at the district level, what are the frequency of the events that we do? Is it a yearly basis that we would conduct evaluations or the...
Meaning, when we get together to discuss indicators of accomplishment?
Exactly, yeah.
It would be that, I mean yearly that we do a formal presentation to the school committee, but it's an ongoing piece in terms of looking at the action plan, the action step, and then, you know, what are you doing?
Right now, it's based off of MCAS?
Yep, and also, we have people in groups, two schools in particular, that have gone through a whole data team training, formal training through North River Collaborative, and we're going to continue that in our other three buildings for the next year, moving out to the following years. But really, it's really creating a data team to look at student achievement, teaching and learning, and then informing instruction. So although it is part of an action step that's annually through yearly, it's really something that needs to be done in department meetings, in-service training, faculty meetings, it's an ongoing discussion.
And in terms of the classroom, and how often it takes place for each classroom, let's say there's reading tests, dibbles, and all of those things.
There's all types of assessments, I mean every grade level is different. I mean you have MCAS, of course, but then you have, you know, certain formative assessments, common assessments, summative assessments. You have the dibbles, you've heard me talk about the dibbles, the orf, the maze, and those are things that are all taken into account.
Oral reading fluency test.
So is it additional duties for our teachers, the data teams, or who are they basically comprised of, the department heads?
No, it's going to be representatives in all buildings that are part of the data team, which really looks at from general ed to special ed to administration to teacher leaders. So your department heads could be on that, it would be mostly...
So it varies depending upon...
Right, and the dynamics of the school too. You know, it could be a guidance counselor, but we don't have guidance counselors at all schools. You know, so those types of things.
So the mix varies, it's not a dictated position.
Correct.
It's an additional duty for supplemental.
Right. And it's really, this is, it's been in place, however, this is really a driving force behind the new educator evaluation piece, is that everything, everything and everyone in education is going to be judged on student achievement.
Absolutely.
And so that data is really going to be critical with that evidence. So from the superintendent and all of us, to teachers, to principals, to everyone, we all are going to have that data component, and that's going to be our evidence that backs up the goals that we've set. So you're going to hear me talking more about it as we go on.
Then the last page, the only thing I had, there's a comment for developing and implementing formal mentoring program for new teachers and teachers on improvement plans. But then I, I'm just going to add this, I don't want it added, but you know, also, you know, in the technology age, for our older teachers, you know, mentoring programs for them to get them up to technology. And I know we are doing that in the district, but I just, it might be something just to add.
I think that one was, we could absolutely add that, and that actually is covered when we're doing professional development and things of that sort. But the essence of this one was really that we don't have a formal mentoring program in place that is formal, that we know that...
A documented program.
Absolutely. And so that's what we're going to be, you know, formalizing it and making sure, and again, really focusing on our new teachers and providing them with all the supports that they need.
Absolutely.
But we're always assessing where people are at in their career, and then providing them the services that they would need.
And when you hear about the professional development activities, it will include a lot of the use of technology to improve teaching and learning and instructional media.
Right. And the big piece, Tom, you're going to be hearing more of us talking about this, is technology is a big piece of this.
Absolutely.
And it's not just student, you know, because we have to keep a lot of data, I mean schools have to keep an immense amount of data. But then, how are you really using the data to inform instruction? And understanding the data that's spitting back at you. So there's that component. So there's this, there's all the student pieces of, you know, from everything, from, you know, their age to, you know, are they on an IEP, are they on a five or four, are they Title I, to their background, socioeconomic, to the racial, to you name it. And then, then there's, so that's part of tech, but then there's the whole 21st century movement, and then there's the whole technology, just in terms of using it to not only inform instruction and work with kids, but then how are you using it so that they're going out into the world and being able to... And a lot of it, as you know, Burlington actually does a phenomenal job with training, you know, administrators as well as teachers, but they truly, they have their kids that are training the administrators on the technology. So it's a real movement in Massachusetts, the whole Burlington, and we're going to see it more and more as it's being pushed on that level of expectation in technology. So you'll hear more and more about it, but you're absolutely right, just linking it to all of that is key. So any other questions on the teaching and learning action plan? Thank you. No? Alright, great. So, I'm asking for approval.
Do you want to approve this?
Please.
Yeah, that's fine.
Today? Okay, need a motion to approve the teaching and learning goal action plan as presented.
I make the motion.
Motion by Tom, second by Jeanette. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you.
Great, and then the last piece is you received an enclosure in terms of the Massachusetts educator evaluation model, and it's the collective bargaining and contract language. And that was basically for you to take a look at. You're going to be hearing about this for many years to come. And I'll be doing presentations, but also, we have a committee that has actually been formed, and we have volunteers within the system that represent everyone from teachers, from general ed, special ed, guidance, administrators, we have the AEA. Any school committee member if you'd like to be a part of it, I know that you all work, however, if you ever want, drop me an email, or if you'd like to stop by, you know, during committee meeting, feel free to do that. Our first one will be on April 9th, and it will be at 1:00, and it will be at the North School. And the committee will really be focused on, you know, taking a look and pulling apart. It will be the first meeting. So what is the rollout plan for the Abington Public Schools? Really taking a look at, the first piece is really to look at the language, and then of course, the collective bargaining piece that has to be approved, but also, what are the next steps? Looking at what it entails, what type of training will be needed, what type of time will be needed, what type of infrastructure will be needed. And so really having that team of people that represent all the schools in Abington working together as a whole in terms of that rollout. So that will be taking place on April 9th, and then we'll be, you know, doing our short-term vision as well as our long-term vision, knowing that we are a district that has to be up and running by September 2013. So, we have some time, but it's coming quick. So, we have a lot of work to do, but feel free to stop by at that meeting, and then at that meeting, we'll be setting the next meetings to come for the remainder of the school year.
And if we do this the right way, then all of the other initiatives that we've been talking about will fold into this, the data teams fold into this, as Dr. Thomas talked about. Curriculum review and update falls under this because you're doing that to improve teaching and learning in each individual classroom, based on the data.
Right.
And so this is, if we do nothing else, this is the most important thing that we can do over the next year to improve achievement in Abington.
And if I could just take a moment, if you want to take a look, you know, the whole document, I know that you get so many pieces of paper from us, however, the page three is really the true essence of what, aside from the collective bargaining language that of course has to go into contracts, if you really look at the bullets there, really highlights, you know, what is going to be taking place. That every educator will assess his or her own performance and propose one or more challenging goals for improving his or her own practice. A formal process for reflection and self-assessment creates the foundation of a new opportunity for educators to chart their own course for professional growth and development. Every educator will be using a rubric that offers a detailed picture of practice at four levels of performance. District-wide rubrics set the stage for both deep reflection and the rich dialogue about practice that our profession seeks. Third is every educator will also consider their students' needs, using a wide range of ways to assess student growth and propose one or more challenging goals for improving student learning. They'll be able to monitor progress carefully and analyze the impact of their hard work. The fourth one is every educator will be expected to consider team goals, which is a clear indication of the values the new process places on both collaboration and accountability. And then the last is that every educator will compile and present evidence and conclusions about their performance and progress on their goals, ensuring that the educator voice is critical to the process. So that's really the essence. There's a lot that goes with it that you'll be hearing more about, but you know, for the purpose of understanding that and then the other piece, it's really about that we're one team and that the goal is always about student achievement. So any questions on that that I could answer tonight?
The million dollar question, what is rubric?
A rubric? Oh, you're gonna hear that. She's right there.
It's a good question.
Nicole Rich, the principal from the preschool, actually has some great examples tonight that she's going to be walking you through, which are rubrics that we use to actually assess our preschool in our kindergarten.
Education arena.
It's basically how you assess, you know, your goal. You know, what is the rubric? What are the expectations? What are the set standards, the set goals that you have for yourself? And then, have you met, have you met that standard? Have you met that? What is the rubric to get there? So we use rubrics for that, that you'll see tonight, and you saw it on your packet, but then if you also have a rubric for, like kids use rubrics all the time, you know, we do them at night, you know, with our own kids, just in terms of, here's everything that you need for this science project. So here's the rubric, here's the expectation of the teacher, and then the same thing later.
Strategic guideline, one for expectations.
But Nicole actually will do a nice presentation, so that you'll be able to see, you know, even though preschool and K, you'll look at it and you'll go, oh, these are really cute, you know, it's really the fundamentals of education and what she'll be presenting tonight. Because if they don't have those fundamentals... So although it is part of an action step that's annually, yearly, it's really something that needs to be done in department meetings, in-service training, faculty meetings, it's an ongoing discussion.
And in terms of the classroom, and how often it takes place for each classroom, let's say there's, there's reading tests, dibbles and all of those things.
There's all types of assessments. I mean, every grade level is different. I mean, you have MCAS, of course, but then you have, you know, certain formative assessments, common assessments, summative assessments. You have the dibbles. You've heard me talk about the dibbles, the orps, the mays, and those are things that are all taken into account.
Oral reading fluency test.
So is it additional duties for our teachers, the data teams, or who are they basically comprised of, the department heads?
No, it's going to be representatives in all buildings that are part of the data team, which really looks at from general ed to special ed to administration to teacher leaders. So your department heads could be on that. It would be mostly.
So it varies depending upon?
Right. And the dynamics of the school, too. You know, it could be a guidance council, but we don't have guidance councils at all schools. You know, so those types of things.
So the mix varies. It's not, it's not a dictated position. It's an additional duty for supplemental.
Correct. And it's really, this is, is, it's been in place. However, this is really a driving force behind the new educator evaluation piece is that everything, everything and everyone in education is going to be judged on student achievement.
Absolutely.
And so that data is really going to be critical with that evidence. So from the superintendent and all of us, to teachers, to principals, to everyone. We all are going to have that data component, and that's going to be our evidence that backs up the goals that we've set. So you're going to hear me talking more about it as we go on.
Then the last page, the only thing I had on, there's a comment for developing and implementing formal mentoring program for new teachers and teachers on improvement plans. But then I, I'm just going to add this. I don't want it added, but you know, also, you know, in the technology age for our older teachers, you know, mentoring programs for them to get them up to technology. And I know we are doing that in the district, but I just, it might be something just to add.
I think that one was, we could absolutely add that, and that actually is covered when we're doing professional development and things of that sort. But the essence of this one was really that we don't have a formal mentoring program in place that is formal, that we know that.
A documented program.
Absolutely. And so that's what we're going to be, you know, formalizing it and making sure, and again, really focusing on our new teachers and providing them with all the supports that they need.
Absolutely.
But we're always assessing where people are at in their career, and then providing them the services that they would need.
And when you hear about the professional development activities, it will include a lot of the use of technology to improve teaching and learning and instructional media.
Right. And the big piece, Tom, you're going to be hearing more of us talking about this, is technology is a big piece of this.
Absolutely.
And it's not just student, you know, because we have to keep a lot of data. I mean, schools have to keep an immense amount of data. But then, how are you really using the data to inform instruction? And understanding the data that's spitting back at you. So there's that component. So there's this, there's all the student pieces of, you know, from everything, from, you know, their age to, you know, are they on an IEP? Are they on a five or four? Are they Title I? To their background, socioeconomic, to their racial, to you name it. And then, then there's, so that's part of tech. But then there's the whole 21st century movement. And then there's the whole technology, just in terms of using it to not only inform instruction and work with kids, but then how are you using it so that they're going out into the world and being able to? And a lot of it, as you know, Burlington actually does a phenomenal job with training, you know, administrators as well as teachers, but they truly, they have their kids that are training the administrators on the technology. So it's a real movement in Massachusetts, the whole Burlington, and we're going to see it more and more as it's being pushed on that level of expectation in technology. So you'll hear more and more about it, but you're absolutely right, just linking it to all of that is key. So any other questions on the teaching and learning action plan? Thank you. No? All right, great. So I'm asking for approval.
Do you want to approve this?
Please.
Today? Okay. Need a motion to approve the teaching and learning goal action plan as presented.
I make the motion.
Motion by Tom. Second by Jeanette. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you.
Great. And then the last piece is you received an enclosure in terms of the Massachusetts educator evaluation model, and it's the collective bargaining and contract language. And, and that was basically for you to take a look at. You're going to be hearing about this for many years to come. And I'll be doing presentations, but also, we have a committee that has actually been formed, and we have volunteers within the system that represent everyone from teachers, from general ed, special ed, guidance, administrators, we have the AEA. Any school committee member if you'd like to be a part of it. I know that you all work. However, if you ever want, drop me an email, or if you'd like to stop by, you know, during committee meeting, feel free to do that. Our first one will be on April 9th, and it will be at 1:00, and it will be at the North School. And the committee will really be focused on, you know, taking a look and pulling apart. It will be the first meeting. So what is the rollout plan for the Abington Public Schools? Really taking a look at, the first piece is really to, to look at the language, and then, of course, the collective bargaining piece that has to be approved, but also, what are the next steps? Looking at what it entails, what type of training will be needed, what type of time will be needed, what type of instruction, infrastructure will be needed. And so really having that team of people that represent all the schools in Abington working together as a whole in terms of that rollout. So that will be taking place on April 9th. And then we'll be, you know, doing our short-term vision as well as our long-term vision, knowing that we are a district that has to be up and running by September 2013. So we have some time, but it's coming quick. So we have a lot of work to do, but feel free to stop by at that meeting. And then at that meeting, we'll be setting the next meetings to come for the remainder of the school year.
And if we do this the right way, then all of the other initiatives that we've been talking about will fold into this. The data teams fold into this, as Dr. Thomas talked about. Curriculum review and update falls under this because you're doing that to improve teaching and learning in each individual classroom based on the data.
Right.
And so this is, this is, if we do nothing else, this is the most important thing that we can do over the next year to improve achievement in Abington.
And if I could just take a moment, if you want to take a look, you know, the whole document, I know that you get so many pieces of paper from us. However, the page three is really the true essence of what, aside from the collective bargaining language that, of course, has to go into contracts, if you really look at the bullets there, really highlights, you know, what is going to be taking place. That every educator will assess his or her own performance and propose one or more challenging goals for improving his or her own practice. A formal, a formal process for reflection and self-assessment creates the foundation of a new opportunity for educators to chart their own course for professional growth and development. Every educator will be using a rubric that offers a detailed picture of practice at four levels of performance. District-wide rubrics set the stage for both deep reflection and the rich dialogue about practice that our profession seeks. Third is every educator will also consider their students' needs, using a wide range of ways to assess student growth and propose one or more challenging goals for improving student learning. They'll be able to monitor progress carefully and analyze the impact of their hard work. The fourth one is every educator will be expected to consider team goals, which is a clear indication of the values the new process places on both collaboration and accountability. And then the last is that every educator will compile and present evidence and conclusions about their performance and progress on their goals, ensuring that the educator voice is critical to the process. So that's really the essence. There's a lot that goes with it that you'll be hearing more about, but, you know, for the purpose of, of understanding that and then the other piece, it's really about that we're one team and that the goal is always about student achievement. So any questions on that that I could answer tonight?
The million-dollar question, what is rubric?
A rubric? Oh, you're going to hear that. She's right there. Nicole Rich, the principal of the preschool, actually has some great examples tonight that she's going to be walking you through, which are rubrics that we use to actually assess our preschool in our kindergarten. It's basically how you assess, you know, your goal. You know, what is the rubric? What are the expectations? What are the set standards, the set goals that you have for yourself? And, and then have you met, have you met that standard? Have you met that? What is the rubric to get there? So we use rubrics for that, that you'll see tonight, and you saw it on your packet. But then if you also have a rubric for, like, kids use rubrics all the time. You know, we do them at night, you know, with our own kids, just in terms of, here's everything that you need for this science project. So here's the rubric. Here's the expectation of the teacher, and then the same thing later.
Special way to guide one for expectations.
But Nicole actually will do a nice presentation, so that you'll be able to see. You know, even though preschool and K, you'll look at it and you'll go, oh, these are really cute. You know, it's really the fundamentals of education and what she'll be presenting tonight. Because if they don't have those fundamentals, then it's really difficult as the kids proceed, you know, throughout their, their schooling.
In other words, even tonight, there were, there were numbers that were used by the students that presented the Very Hungry Caterpillar. There was a public speaking.
Right.
Presentation. You know, there was a rubric for, for skill sets that the teachers were looking for.
Who is the team you mentioned? What is, who is, name the people, or the people that are creating that team already? Is it already set?
Well, they're going to receive the email from me in the morning.
Your invitation.
But, no, well, you know, honestly, a lot, I put it up to the whole district. So it was volunteer, so people, but I did have to turn away some people because we had so many at certain levels versus not enough at other levels. But the key was to get representation from every school and to also follow, you know, the format in terms of general ed, special ed, you know, guidance, AEP, principals, all of it. And then also have the AEA involved because it's very important for the collaboration there. And then, of course, you know, school committee members are welcome anytime. Thank you. Sure. Any other questions? Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you.
Peter Schaefer, Unfinished Business.
Back to the second page of the agenda, under Roman numeral five, number one, Community Support Action Goal, Action Plan. I'd like to thank the, the people who worked on this school with me, Dr. Nicole Rich, Jessica Sullivan, Marilyn Weber, Suzanne Furness, Shannon Harrington, Patricia Narcata, Sarah Bullman, Peter Serino, Cheryl Dougherty, and Joy Frainy for helping. We went through, oh, I think, four different drafts and reviews. It's been reviewed with the district administrators. I presented it at the last school committee meeting, walked people through it, and certainly didn't want to answer people's questions about it. So the strategic action plan is community support. And I'll just, you know, I'll mention the, the goals to generate strong community support for the school district and create and implement a plan to effectively communicate the message of the Abington Public Schools with constituent groups in the community. This really takes the best of the old and adds technology to it. And then includes a couple of other pieces and elements here around community service, character education, intergenerational projects, inter-grade, multi-school projects where we have our older students working with our younger students and vice versa, because I think it's a benefit that goes, having older students work with younger students, being role models and expectations for kids, promoting in our students an awareness of their responsibility to participate in the community, and then building strong community support for education through the approval of the annual budget and special budget requests with the town. But I want to answer some questions that.
Just an overall question. All these subsections are going to be part of our major strategic plan.
Exactly.
And what's our plan going to be for, you know, checking to see that we're implementing and meeting these?
Every, every year, what will happen is this, what you have, and I'll explain it for the people at home, is you've got, there's a, there's a grid with an action step, person responsible, the indicator of accomplishment, and the status for each one of these action steps. And then annually, what will come back, what will happen is we'll come back and update you on the status of each of these. And what you'll find is some of the elements of the action plan or the strategic plan will be met, and then they'll sort of be checked off, and then they'll, they'll stay just to recognize and memorialize that they occurred and they were progressed toward the goal. Others will be ongoing and be taken care of later, and some you always want to get to, but, you know, I, I, I hope we get 100% of it done, but you'll find that some of them will be things that you just are ongoing and you're just always going to continue to work on and work on.
Peter? I have a question. Are we still doing the, I think it was the sixth grade was going down and mentoring with the kindergarteners? Are we still doing that?
We are.
Is it six to kindergarten?
One of the things we want to promote through this plan is, you know, when, when our high school students go to the Frolio, or Frolio students go to the Woodsdale, Woodsdale students go to the Beaver Brooker or to the Center School, you have role models who are talking to the students and providing them a day in the life of a student in the school that they're going to go to. And so they're, they are student athletes, students first and then athletes, or they're involved in the music program or drama, and they're our students, and they're, they are our role models. And they are, you know, the rumors run fast and furious in towns and in school districts. All students in America are afraid they're going to go to middle schools and be shoved in lockers. But when you have a middle school student that comes down and says, look, I've never been shoved in a locker, and it's okay, and I, you know, we, you know, I do my homework, and I get good grades, and I enjoy the school, and I enjoy the freedom, and because it comes from an older student, it's believable because, and sometimes when it comes from us as adults, they don't believe us. But I also think that there's, and that's in this plan. There also is a component where the younger students have this effect on the older students. The older students feel as though they're a role model because they have people looking up to them, so it helps them improve also. So it's this cycle. And, and we want to involve also senior groups with our students, and I think because that has the same effect.
So the school committee will get a review of this annually. How often will you review it with your staff to get updates on the progress?
We'll do, we'll do a check-in with it at the beginning of the year, and then as we move through the year, to make sure that everything we have here is, we're moving in the right direction, it's on the radar screen. And then before the end of the year, we'll give the school committee a summary.
These are also linked to every school's school improvement plan.
Yeah.
So that they have to take a look at the whole, you know, district's strategic plan, link that to their school improvement plan, and it'll be a little different in every school.
Absolutely.
Because of the ages, because of the focus. We have some schools that, you know, need to focus because of the MCAS and AYP and things of that sort. NEASC, you know, we're in, we're in a great place tonight, you know, with NEASC. We're off morning, we have full accreditation, so that's great. So that'll come off the radar a little bit, you know, at the high school level, but again, it's all linked to every school's improvement plan as well.
So you guys will sit with?
Yeah, that's.
Each of the schools and prioritize?
Right.
What we want to accomplish this year?
And that's during administrative teams. We also have leadership team meetings. Those are done, you know, two, twice a month, so.
And this div set, you know, school councils will be using them to develop their goals so that we're all moving in the, in the same, in the same direction. These plan, you can have the best written plan in the Commonwealth. If you don't use it, it's worthless.
Right. So you might only see it annually, but it'll be an ongoing live document.
I think that's important to note is that I sit on two different school councils, and we talk about how does this link to where the, where we're moving as a district? How do we, one at the Woodsdale, one at the Beaver Brook? You know, in different age brackets, different makeup of population, you know, and how do we meet that goal? So it is something that we talk monthly, I mean, at every meeting.
Any other questions? Okay. Need a motion to approve the Community Support Goal Action Plan as presented.
Make a motion.
Motion by Jeanette. Second by Trish. All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you.
And next reporter.
Superintendent of Schools. Item is under Personnel Administration Informational on the recommendation of Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Moore. I've approved the appointment of Ms. Kate Casey as the girls' lacrosse coach for the 2011-2012 school year on the recommendation of Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Moore. I've appointed the following volunteer coaches for the 2012 spring season. Mr. William Casely, track; David Crane, ultimate frisbee; Meg Dougherty, lacrosse; Martin French, softball; Edward Mace, tennis; John Norton, softball; and William Yazbeck, baseball. Continue on to. Other matters? I have three different job descriptions for you. The first one is a district-wide behavior therapist. This is a position that we've been contracting the services for through North River Collaborative because we are required to have a certified licensed behavior therapist or behavior therapists to meet the needs of, of our students and their educational plans. There is a licensure, there's a training, there's a component here that takes place in terms of the lives of these professionals at the school and at the home because not all of the students coming to the Abington Public Schools come to schools ready to learn. So it's inherent to their success that these people deal with the, the 24-hour life of a student if they're going to be successful in school rather than the, than the six and a half hours that they're, that they're at school. So what you have here is the title, who they report to, the job goals. We, in, in trying to provide service in Abington and provide the best supervision and management of that service in Abington, rather than spend this money out of the district, look to bring this position into the Abington Public Schools. Again, because it, it provides the best service for kids, it provides the most affordable service because we're doing it ourselves, and it provides, if we supervise it, if we're doing the evaluations, we have control over it. And it, and that in the end benefits our children. And so this, before we, before we have a position like that, we need a job description for it. And so what you have here are their, are their basic essential functions. To work in multiple schools and in as homes as required, conduct functional behavioral assessments and write student behavioral intervention plans, consult with all appropriate staff on behavioral program writing, implementation, and assessment, facilitate student transition planning from grade to grade or between schools, design and implement home-based programs, establish excellent working relationships with families to ensure follow-through of behavioral strategies in the home, remain current in the field of behavioral intervention, attend team meetings, and act as a consultant to those teams. Development may implement data collection systems to assess with the analysis, to assist teams with the analysis of data and connect, in connecting that to the student learning goals. Model and demonstrate proper intervention strategies for staff and parents, perform all of the duties as assigned to the principal and the assistant superintendent for people personal services. And then you can see the qualification list, including a minimum of bachelor's, special education experience preferred, the licensure that's required, the BCBA, knowledge of behavioral interventions, and so on. And then again, the last one, such alternatives to the above qualifications as the superintendent may find appropriate and acceptable. So I want to answer any questions that people might have about that first job description.
Do, would we anticipate this being a full-time position within our district?
Yes.
So have we reached critical mass now with the services that we're contracting through North River Collaborative, so it's more cost-effective for us to take in-house?
This is, this is about a wash.
Okay. So you know what I mean?
Yep. And we're going, and what we want to do is move toward cost-effectiveness. This one, because you had the benefits in, included, we included that in this calculation in terms of the benefit of the costs. This one's a wash, and this one, the benefit is the control over the program, the person in your district, your supervision evaluation of it.
One question, BCBA, what does that stand for?
Board Certified Behavioral Analyst.
Thank you.
So Peter, you're just, you're doing this description so that if we decide budgetary-wise that we can put this position in, we will?
Good question.
Have a job description so you can go out and hire someone.
We're spending this money anyway.
Right.
This would just shift the money from where we're currently spending it contracting the services out of the district to bringing it to a position in the district. So the money's already budgeted, the money's already there, although we don't have a budget for next year. It's already in this current budget, hoping we carry over to the next one. And then rather than, we're going to be required to contract these services for the same amount of money. We're going to have to do that anyway, even if we have to cut something else to do that because it's a special education requirement. So this would be one that we'd want to put in place.
Now currently, we have, do we have one or two individuals that do this from North River? I know we have one, do we have two? I thought we had two.
We have part-time people.
So they're both part-time in the, they split their time, so it's the same.
Right. And we have, but we have a teacher who's already hired that has ABA, BCBA, all of that, that's at one school, but she's already been hired under the Abington Public Schools contract. That was last year. And so then we were able to decrease our services through the contracted service because we had someone that was able to cover that school and the needs of that school. And so this one is, is basically worth trying to do the same, is move it under, because again, it's, it's control and it is a savings. You know, the contracted services, you know, can go up, whereas we have more control over our contract here within the Abington Public Schools. And then it's based on need. You know, we have severe, you know, kids with disabilities and that need, you know, if you take, for example, ABA and discrete trial training, which is a lot of what the BCBA does, for your, your kids that are on the PDD, autism, autistic.
So what's discrete trial? What's PDD?
Well, it's a specific, sorry, I, I do that a lot.
It's okay.
So I need to be stopped, so don't, don't be offend, you're not offending me when you stop me with my acronym. But in terms of a discrete trial, it's basically a scripted way of behavioral interventions, behavioral strategy that these children need to learn, not only here in school, but also in a home, and then it's transference of that. Whereas some of us, our kids automatically learn that developmentally. Some children don't, are not equipped to learn that developmentally. So it's a different type of technique that we're training these kids that, that struggle in a certain area. And then you try to do as much, like, at, at Dr. Rich's school, you try to do the more intensive, because the more you can do it pre-K and K, and then you move them up into more of a behavioral support so that they might have a behavior plan and not getting pulled out of class for the discrete trial that is very regimented. You will move the, you know, move this pen from here to here. You know, that's very, let me show you how to do it, it'll be hand over hand, we're going to move it, and then we're going to move it back. And that takes years in some cases to learn. But then as you, that'll be something that, you know, you've mastered, you're able to then move up to the next grade level, and then hopefully, you're doing different types of skills that you're learning. And then it's more of a behavior plan. And then the same thing, you know, in terms of when you get up to the five, six school, or the seven, eight school, or the nine through 12 school, you definitely have different needs, different types of behaviors. So that's where you have people that are working, whether it's here at school, working with staff members who may be struggling with a particular student in their class that is having behavioral, you know, concerns, and they don't know how to handle it. So you have that opportunity to have that person working within the classroom, but you also have that ability to work with the child within the classroom with the teacher. And then you also have the opportunity to do the home piece. So that you're able to, and you, and you're able to set up a contract such as this so that we're not paying additional contracted services so that they're going out into the home at night. We're saying, your job is going to be this. So if we need you to do this at night, or after school, or what have you, or on a school vacation, then it's part of your salary. And then you're also doing this, you know, within the school day and things. But it's very specific to the case. It's very specific to the need. So they work closely, of course, and it's not only for special ed. In some cases, you know, you really try to do those interventions with, through general ed, you know, in terms of you see a child that's starting to struggle, that there is a crisis going on, and you want to really, you know, attack that crisis with the need. And those BCBA people will be able to do it. Or even think of something small like riding on a bus. I mean, some kids do it fine, majority of our kids do it fine, but then some kids cannot manage it. Well, it's not that we don't want them to have the experience of the bus, but we may have to train you on how to be on the bus. So we may send someone with you, or we may be doing it, you know, at different times to do that type of training. So it could be general ed. A lot of this, though, is really regulated by what the needs are for our special ed students, but there's a real benefit to also our general ed.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So is this a 12-month position year-round, or is it synced up with the school year?
This one would be a school year.
Okay.
And then depending upon the need, we also have a summer school program that Peter will be speaking about next, and then certain people also are paid during the summer. So you have teachers, parent professionals, you would have a nurse, you would have a BCBA, you would have whomever you need depending upon the parent that decides to send their child, it's recommended for summer, and then we would include that.
And just for people that are watching at home, you know, you say, well, you know, teach a child how to ride a bus. We have challenges, and we have kids in schools that are coming to schools that didn't use to come to schools, that were previously institutionalized, and that need this assistance, and that we're required to provide this assistance to children as a part of the law, as part of what we, what they're, we're required to provide for those children.
I just got one question for Felicia. Felicia, would this go from the outer district budgeting into our account salary for teachers then?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Need a motion to approve the job description for a district-wide behavior therapist as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Jeanette. Second by Trish. All those in favor?
Aye.
Neillis, thank you.
The next one is, the next two are summer school directors. There are two different summer school programs in Abington. The first one is the secondary academic summer school. This is a position that we've had every year, this goes back decades. This is for students that need credit recovery at the secondary level. It's a self-funded program, doesn't make any money, doesn't lose any money, when we have enough students to fill the grade seven or eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve English class, that class is filled with students and the instructor is paid, but it requires somebody to, and their salary comes out of this account, out of the tuitions that are paid. We need somebody to advertise, to set up the programs, to work with the guidance counselors at the secondary level, and the principal at the secondary level to develop a list of students that are going to be attending, to register the students, have them fill out, you know, the basic information forms, all of those things that schools do, minus the infrastructure of the school because of the summer program. They have the assistance of the principals and the central office because we're around, but this is the traditional summer school that we all think of when we think of summer school. And so this job description cover those functions that I just described, and we've never had a job description for it. And so that's not good practice, so proposing the following.
Is there any reason why we don't have a minimum of a master's for this program at this point?
Well, we'll be hiring people with a master's degree. I can't imagine that we wouldn't unless there's a severe shortage. If we didn't have somebody that we didn't have faith in in terms of running this program, we wouldn't hire them.
But in some cases, you get, you know, a young, I can't say kid, but a young person that's coming out of school, that is going, working during the day, taking their masters at night, they don't have the masters yet, but yet they're able to do our summer programming, you're able to, you know, hire them for that. Sometimes you run into, it's just, people would love to, but they also have family during the summer, they have other situations during the summer, so it's really looking at, so we put that as a minimum, doesn't mean that-
Generally, it's somebody, it's a lot of times somebody getting their master's degree in administration.
Right.
This is a precursor to the assistant principalship.
Yeah, we have a lot of those.
Principalship.
And they have CAGS degrees, or they're working toward the doctorate, or they already have the masters, but they're looking for the practicum hours or whatever, is depending upon the case.
So again, this is not a new position for everybody out there in town, it's just a job description for an old position.
Right, that funds itself.
That funds itself. So we need a motion to approve the job description of a, I'm sorry, of a director of the secondary academic summer school program as presented. Motion by Trish, second by Ellen, all those in favor? Neillis, thank you.
Then the next one is the director of the pre-K through eight summer academic support program. This is a program that we're required to run for our students who have educational plans to provide work in the summer so that they don't lose progress we've made during the school year with them. This is someone that Dr. Thomas works pretty closely with in terms of providing those services and those supports to our pre-K through eight students. This is not, you know, this is funded by the district, we're required to provide this service, this is not a tuition-based program. Dr. Thomas, I don't know if you may add anything? This, again, is a position that we've had for decades, but we have not had a job description for it, and we want to clean that up and have a job description.
Any questions?
Do both programs run typically the same amount of time? More time, less time?
The secondary runs for one month, and then this further runs for five weeks.
I just had a question on the transportation. So are we providing the same transportation to the pre-K, eight, we're providing transportation?
Only if it's needed, and if the parent can't get their child here, or if it's according to our IEP. Many families are able to bring their child to school for the summer program, it's three-hour program, drop them off, pick them up, but it's not automatic. But in just in making that more clear is that it's according to IEPs. This whole ESY, Extended School Year, is really, they're all students on an IEP.
Any other questions? Need a motion to approve the job description for director of the pre-K through eight summer academic support program as presented. Motion by Jeanette, second by Tom, all those in favor? Neillis. Preliminary budget update.
We've had, as a school committee, a number of meetings. I don't think that much of this is going to be new for our school committee members. There have been subcommittee meetings with Tricia and Tom, and then additional meetings, a Saturday meeting with the finance committee and other people from the town who are interested in coming, members of the board of selectmen and others, and appreciate all the people that have spent so much time with us. But in thinking about all this information that we've been talking about for the last couple, the last couple of weeks or the last couple of months, we thought it appropriate to bring an update for the benefit of Gable and to do a brief summary. We have made some adjustments based on the conversations that we've had, and what I'd like to do is make sure that I highlight a couple of things, the backdrop for this, that this is a restorative budget, and as a result of some cuts that we've had that started in FY two thousand and nine, where our budget was nineteen point one million to our current budget in FY twelve of seventeen point seven million, that's reflective of a one point four million dollar cut, or about a seven percent decrease in funding over that time period, although we did do better in two thousand and twelve than we did do in two thousand and eleven, we came back somewhat, we are still down seven percent from the high watermark of two thousand and nine. We have a proposed increase by major category for you from the two thousand and twelve budget, which is today's budget of seventeen point seven million, to the proposed preliminary budget of nineteen point seven. So the increase by major category, and as we've talked about before, the one fifty E non-collective bargaining line of four hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars is a amount of money that's being held for the negotiation of all contracts in the Abington Public Schools, not knowing where any of those are going to land. And I'll use an extreme example to illustrate a point, so I don't get myself in trouble with anybody that we're negotiating with. So that's going to be anywhere from, you know, zero percent to fifty percent, and we don't know where that is. And we're not saying here that it's going to be anything other than we are required to have some number in here. And so we, for tonight or for today, for the preliminary budget, we have plugged in a number. Some people could wrongly think that that means that there's four hundred ninety-two dollars, six hundred ninety-seven dollars someplace waiting for somebody, and there isn't, because all of those contracts are being negotiated. New and restored positions, there's eight hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars in proposed restored positions. And what you'll see in the presentation is, through the budget and finance subcommittee, we've talked about tiers, about the most important needs, I'm going to talk about those later, and we'll focus on tier one and really just show you tier two and tier three. I think there's little hope that we'll get to tier two or tier three, but I want to be, I want to communicate to people that when you look at those positions, and we'll just look at them for a moment, there's no equestrian team here, there's no swim team here, they are classroom teachers to restore program and services to Abington students. We take a retirement offset.
This eight thirty-two is actually a reduction of two hundred.
It's a reduction of what we had previously.
From our original presentation.
From our original presentation, yep. Retirement offset of eighteen thousand seven hundred and two dollars for a total increase of one point three million dollars. We know that this number is going to go down before we get to a final number before the town meeting. Last night's board of selectmen's meeting and the finance committee meeting, information that I've learned of, and the town manager's recommendation will be to put off all money articles until later in the year because of the nature of budgeting in a tough time, especially in Massachusetts, when the governor's budget proposal, the House One is out, but the Senate and the House haven't come out with theirs. Jim's going to talk maybe a little bit later about the day on the Hill that we went to today, about budget outlooks and things like that, but needless to say, we don't have any definite numbers yet. And so we know that this is going to go down, but it's a place for us to be at least discussing things at this point in time. Special education tuitions, you see, that's a reduction from what it was to six hundred and seventy-three thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars, and then a circuit breaker offset increase to sixty-seven thousand eight dollars. And that increase in offset is a good thing because that means we're anticipating additional circuit breaker money, we're hoping we're going to do better than sixty-two percent, but at this point in time, we don't have good information on that. We're also hoping to reduce the special education tuition numbers. We've talked quite a bit in our meetings that there's an April first move-in law, which is right around the corner. That means students of special needs who are in expensive out-of-district placements that move into Abington after April first, that bill is owned by the community that they move from prior to April first, it's owned by us. We always have our own Abington students that migrate in and migrate out, but as we get later in the year, as they migrate out, they become more expensive, and as we get later in the year, we get more and more confident about our anticipation as to how that's going to track. The placements are successful, if they could be moving in the wrong direction, and they need more assistance in a more expensive placement. So as, again, as we get closer to when the town of Abington will be deciding the money articles, that we're hoping will be reduced. Other school services, transportation contract, anticipated increase to ten thousand dollars. Special education transportation, nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-two. Instruction, textbook curriculum framework compliance, eight thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. It's, a lot of that is workbooks and programs at the secondary level that require textbook replacement or replenishing for total proposed increase right now, and a very preliminary number of one point nine million dollars, or a ten point nine-three percent increase. And again, that number is, is high in a good time, let alone a difficult time. But what people, I hope, need to understand about the budget is when you look at the positions that make up the bulk of this, and the special education bill, it's premature to take chances on the special education bill. And as you look at these positions that I'm about to talk about that come from our school councils, to not talk about them and not represent our budget with them in the budget until they have to be removed because the dollars just don't exist to fund them, I think we'd be wrong because they represent what we believe our schools should have for programs for our students. So if we take a look at tier one, you'll see special education teacher at the Frollo, anticipating that as a result of students, student migration from the elementary level to the Frollo. Grade one. The addition of a grade one teacher, and that's because our current anticipated grade one class size, without any projected increase, next year would be twenty-nine students. And so to not have that proposal in there to reduce grade one, we had kindergartners in here, I mean, next year they'll be first graders. I want you to imagine, you saw, you saw what happened to this room with that small number of students in it, to think, teaching those students how to read, how to write, and how to do math in computations in a room full of twenty-nine is unbelievable. And so we're looking to add this to reduce that number. Grade two, is the same situation in terms of our numbers. As you add those positions, you need to add special positions such as math, physical education, music, as you add sections, you need to add those other program pieces, and then a reading tutor for the center of school. Those are students, again, the students you saw here today, in terms of the acquisition of reading skills is one of the most important things we can do to ensure their success in the Abington Public Schools for the rest of their career in Abington. And then a co-curricular piece for Abington High School and Frollo Middle School, included in that is a music piece, those are donations and representative fees that we collect from our booster organizations who are generous enough to support those programs. Without those booster organizations, both the sports and the music parents, we wouldn't have those programs for our children. Those are things that schools should have, those are schools that, those are reasons for people to attend their high school because they have those programs and a part of a high school experience. And to not represent that in your budget and just take those dollars year after year after year is really, I think, a slap in the face to those organizations that have worked so hard to support us that we're just going to assume that those dollars are always going to be there. And so even if we make little progress here, but we make some progress, and those numbers are reduced to some percentage less than that at some point, as the budget cycles improve, I think that it's important to do that and not to assume that people are going to pay those fees to have their students participate in something we should be doing. Spanish position at Frollo Middle School, point six, would add a foreign language component for grade seven and help ensure that students only have one, no more than one study hall a day. Then the art program at Abington High School, it's not the traditional art program that most people might think of when they think of an art program. This is a highly sophisticated, high-level, high-performing art program at Abington High School. Later in the agenda, you'll see, we have a gold key winner from Abington High School under informational. These are the precursors to architectural careers and digital design classes that are state-of-the-art in terms of students' acquisitions of skills. These are what students want to take at Abington High School, part of the richness of the curriculum. So those are our tier-one positions. These positions were recommended by the administrative team, they've been through a rigorous process with the budget and finance subcommittee in terms of their order, their priority, we've moved some things based on those discussions, and that adds three hundred and seventeen thousand sixty-seven anticipated dollars to the budget. And again, if you take a look at, that's a lot of money. That could potentially be, that was just shy of our total increase from last year. But as you look at that list, there isn't anything there that shouldn't be there, that you wouldn't want to be representing to the community at this point in the budget cycle. I'd be wrong to take them out at this point, so. Tier two, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these, but again, you're going to see meat and potato positions here. There's nothing pie in the sky. Math applications, library tutor to keep the library open to the extent that it can be, grade three, grade five, grade six, more art, English and math at Abington High School, and instructional analyst. We'll talk about data at a later school committee meeting. I'm going to bring to you all of the data fields and requirements and dates that are required, so that we're talking about specifics instead of, I just say it all the time, I want you to see it, so you can ask questions about it. And then tier three, again, maximizing the library with the library, grade seven teacher to reduce class numbers and improve the schedule there, wellness, music, social workers that were, social worker that we're currently fulfilling with, interns, and a tutor for the Woodsdale School, for a total increase of the eight hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And so that's just an update of what we've been talking about with the budget to date. And again, as we move closer to town meeting, those numbers will be reduced, but I certainly don't want to take any questions. I don't think it's anything that people haven't seen, but certainly want to take any questions that people might have.
I just want to clarify, Peter, on, just so the public knows, grade one and grade two, we're currently in the low thirties, that addition of those teachers would bring us into the high twenties, correct?
They're currently projected at twenty-nine for next year if we do nothing. If we add a teacher, they'll go to twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? No. No motion on that, anything?
No.
Okay. Okay. Then leave it. And next to safety concerns at Bedford Street and Glenowits Way.
I was, I was asked by Tom through the chair to, and then through the chair, to place this as an agenda item. The intersection of Bedford and Glenowits is a dangerous place. And what we've done in the Abington Public Schools is we've asked on a number of occasions the assistance, I'm going to turn this over for discussion in a moment, but I just want to make sure that I say one thing about, about that intersection. Certainly recognize it's dangerous. Certainly want to do something to approve that so it's safer, most of all for our students, but also for the, for the public at large. And I just want to say that the Abington Police Department, every single time as a school department, we call them with a situation, they drop everything and they are there to help us just as fast as they can get somebody to us. And that, that working relationship has been wonderful. And it keeps kids safer and it keeps citizens safer. And on a number of occasions, we've asked for a detail to assist us in this area. And what's been reported to us, I think, is what a lot of people would, would assume at this point, in that, is that with the cuts that we've had, it's difficult, near impossible, they report to me, to have a, the chief, to have an officer stationed there for a regularly scheduled shift from the Abington Police Department. And so, I just wanted to acknowledge, though, that the relationship that we've had with them has been superior. They're always there for us when, when we need them. But they have communicated that it's difficult to station somebody there on a regular basis.
I think it's important, too, just for everyone out in the TV land, is to, we're talking about Route 18, the end of the high school driveway.
Correct.
People may not know.
Yep. Thank you.
You know, we're talking about the high school, not the Woodsdale or the other schools.
Thank you. Yep.
Yeah, right, that intersection, oh.
Route 18 and Glenowits.
Right.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I did ask Peter to do that. And I wanted to try to rally the support of the board to generate a formal letter to request a full-time presence during the peak hours of the entrance and the exit of the school system, to not have a passive monitoring, but even include maybe the DPW to have some type of system installed where we could have an individual to control the flow of traffic there. Because many in the audience might not know, but we had a major accident at the intersection there approximately two weeks ago. It was funny timing because just prior to that, you know, I discussed with Peter that, you know, it is an issue. I have a child that does go to the high school and the junior high, so I see that traffic occasionally when I do drop them off. You know, I just wanted to make a couple points to try to solidify to the chief that this is a necessity. You know, we're talking our children's, and we're talking, you know, during the morning rush hour traffic, you know, a high volume of traffic going through that area. So I find it difficult to see there isn't another point in town that needs more attention during those two periods of time during the day. I just want to make a few notes here that I did. It's a high volume of walkers that go across that busy street on a daily basis. And everybody knows, kids 15 to 18-year-old, they're, they're going to bolt at some point across if they're running late for class. With presence of a full-time officer there is going to hopefully mitigate that situation. It's not only going to help the flow of traffic in and out of the school, it's going to help the flow of traffic that backs up because of a lot of students and teachers drop their younger siblings off from the Frolio, and it backs up all the way onto Washington Street sometimes. So it creates a traffic problem there also. You know, we've got the highest concentration of inexperienced drivers. You're talking about high school drivers with minimal allowance under their belt that don't make the most perfect decisions in driving decisions. You know, I, you know, the presence of a full-time officer there, we're talking maybe a half an hour during the morning, a half an hour in the afternoon, we're talking a total of one hour out of an eight-hour shift. That's approximately 15 percent. We'll ask for that approximately 180 days out of the year. So you're talking about less than 7 percent of a full-time officer to make sure that our children and that our commuters are making it through the town in a, in a safe manner. You know, I just think, you know, I think there'd be a lot of parents behind this. You know, just seeing, you know, the traffic that goes in there, our students and the parents want to get out, it, it needs some attention. And I would appreciate it if the police department and the DPW would take a look at potentially adding manual lights in there for that period of time. I know it's a state road, however, if you drive down, two towns down at East Bridgewater during the Route 18, that five-way intersection there, if you look after school and during school, there's an officer there that monitors those intersections and actively manages the traffic through that area. And I'm sure it helps out quite a bit. I would, you know, urge the, the chief to, if we could stop the ball rolling on this, it would be greatly appreciated. Last thing I want to do is have Peter have to call one of our parents, tell him that there was a major accident with a fatality. And I think we just barely skimmed by a couple of weeks ago. If you took a look at that blazer and how devastated that was, I think we're very lucky that we came, came away with only minor injuries considering all. So as a group, you know, I don't know if we can get Peter and Teresa and draft a letter and all sign it. I would greatly appreciate your support on this.
Well, tell you, in terms of the school, I mean, what we have at, at our disposal is, is the ability to sign a crossing guard, and I don't think that that would solve the problem. I think that that would, that would.
Yeah, I think, I think we need an actively managed, and somebody that could be there, pull somebody over if they're doing something out of the norm, that has the authority to write a ticket right there, you know. But in addition to monitor the crosswalk and the flow of traffic, because everybody's seen it. It gets backed up on, you know, 18, you've got to let the traffic go sometimes, and you know, it gets backed up on the high school end, too. You know, and just, you know, the timed lights just don't work there, you know. And if we can't do that, then maybe we need to look at, you know, arrows, you know, for that time of the day to allow right and left turns and going across because it's, it's a mess.
Peter, is there any way we could just open a dialogue with the chief, with our safety officer? Even if, I've often wondered about the traffic pattern, drop-off in the morning where the parents go into the semicircle, and it's human nature, parents are running late for work, so they're driving fast, you've got the inexperienced drivers coming in, they're running late for school, and you've got some parents that just drop off on the straightaway, and then their kid runs across when the people are driving into the half-circle. And it's just, oh, you've got parents who don't want to wait for the pattern to go in and return, so they cut out, and a kid's coming out the left-hand side of the parent's car. Boom, someone's, I mean, I've seen it so many times. I've pulled my car in the middle so I wouldn't, you know, the people can't get by. But I wonder if we can somehow look at that whole traffic pattern as a group and figure out.
Something that we could do with the DPW and the police in the schools.
Yeah. Tom, I have a couple of questions. You mentioned East Bridgewater. Do they manually direct traffic through the intersection?
They, they actually have a mechanical box that they're able to manipulate the signal to allow.
So they just.
Yeah, they're on the side monitoring the walkers and everything, but there's a, there's a duty officer that's there with the key punch whatever and manipulates the lights to allow traffic that's getting backed up in whatever regions. And I, I would like to see something if we could facilitate that here in town for that, for that area, capable. I don't know the cost, I don't know, you know, what regulations and stuff. I think it needs to be looked at, but I know if they're doing it on a state highway, 18 down there, that it's capable of being done up here.
Right. I always thought when they redid 18 and widened that in areas of Abington, that they should have put arrows, turn arrows into the high school.
At minimum.
That's just my opinion. And if anybody has been up at the high school when the kids get out, it's like bumper cars. It really is for, you know, that, you know, 15 or 20 minutes after school gets out.
Yeah, and the presence would only need to be a half an hour, you know, like, I'd say 20 minutes prior to people getting into 10 minutes after school arrival. And then it's just a quick rush. And then similar, five minutes before to 20 minutes after dismissal, you know. And I just think, you know, it would be a great advantage to the safety of our children to have an officer there during those timeframes. And first responders, if anything happens, they're right there, you get instantaneous access to either, everybody's trained in CPR and every other type life-saving things, you've got somebody there that could immediately assist and call in instantaneously instead of people fumbling for their phones. You know, it's just perks all along. I know it's a staffing issue, and like you said, Peter, I've been up there many times when I've complained about something and the police are up there showing a presence. You know, they're, they're capable of doing that. I just think we need to up the ante at this point to, you know, really ensure the safety of not only the children, but also the commuters going in because it's, it's a safety hazard to them also.
Yep.
So if you, as a committee, wanted to formalize it by making a motion, such as a motion to direct superintendent schools to send correspondence to the Abington Police Department and Highway Department requesting collaboration on the improvement of the safety of the intersection of Route 18 and Glenowits Way, then that's what I would do.
Did I make that motion?
Okay. Second by Trish. All of us in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you get on it?
I did.
Okay.
How'd they do?
And, Peter, you want to talk about some good news at the high school?
Yeah.
Finally?
We, we received a letter yesterday from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges that the warning status at Abington High School for their accreditation has been removed. And I'm just going to read to you an email that Terry Sullivan, the principal of Abington High School, sent out. We're obviously very excited about this. This is, this is something that we think is, you know, well-deserved and long overdue, and it's, it was a lot of hard work. Now, I'm going to say this at the beginning and the end, now we want to work to continue to maintain this so that we don't, we don't lose this, this status. Here's a copy of the letter that they sent. And again, we just, we just received it yesterday. This is from Terry Sullivan, principal of the high school, was emailed out to the school community. "I am pleased to report at their January meeting, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges Commission on Public and Secondary Schools removed Abington High School from the warning status for accreditation standard of community resources for learning. In the letter I received dated March 23, 2012, the commission made at least 20 acknowledgements or commendations for our work and progress in meeting this standard. This work was reported to the commission in the two-year progress reports submitted on September 30 of 2011. This means that Abington High School returns to fully accredited status from the 2009 decennial report. I would like to recognize the relentless work of the co-chairs, Ms. Doherty, Ms. McHugh, and the steering committee members, Ms. Ferrioli and Assistant Principal Sullivan, as well as the department heads, directors, faculty, committee leaders, who forged ahead tackling each recommendation and proposing thoughtful, feasible solutions. Thank you to the entire school community for all of their support throughout this challenging process. We can be proud of our persistent efforts to sustain excellent programs and having, and high school, and high standards that merit the New England Association of Schools and Colleges accreditation."
It's been a long time coming. I'm sure if you asked Terry Sullivan that, she would say the same thing, too. So, good news. Dates to remember: Monday, April 2, school committee meeting at 6:30 PM in the library at Abington High School prior to town meeting; Tuesday, April 3, booters meeting at the high school; Thursday, April 5, in-service early release day; Friday, April 6, Good Friday, all schools and school offices closed; Tuesday, April 10, is the music parents meeting at the high school; Monday, April 16, Friday through April 20, spring vacation; Monday, April 16, Patriots Day, all schools and school offices are closed; Tuesday, April 24, the next regularly scheduled Abington School Committee meeting at 7:00 PM in the Carter Room; and Saturday, April 28, town elections here, or at the high school. Reporter of subcommittees, the MASC, Day on the Hill. Trish, Ellen, Peter, and myself went to the State House today for the annual Day on the Hill. It's a day when school committee members and superintendents can go to the State House, listen to a few constituents, and lobby their representatives for their needs in the town and surrounding districts. We did have a couple of speakers, just want to note them that we listened to. Senator Catherine, Catherine Clark, she's the co-chair of the Joint Committee on Public Service; the state auditor Suzanne Bump; Michael Widmer, president of the Mass Taxpayers Foundation, which we found very interesting; Senator Sonia Chang Diaz, who's the co-chair of the Joint Committee on Education, as well as Representative Ellen Peash, she's also the co-chair Joint Committee on Education; and Representative Marty Walz, she is the vice chair of the House Ways and Means Committee. After we listened to everybody at about 11:50, the fire alarm went off and found out that it was a false alarm. After that, we went up to the great hall and had a very good lunch, which the technical VOTEC schools put on. Very good, outstanding. And then we came back to Abington.
Caught multiple trains.
And, yes, took, took the commuter rail in and took the red line home. Thank you, Teresa, for picking us up.
You're welcome.
Any further comments?
There were a couple of, thank you, Jim, and thank you to Ellen, and thank you for, Tricia, for spending the day with me going in. I think it's, and I want to, you know, I want to hear your comments and your afflictions in the day. It's important that school committees and superintendents go to those meetings because I think it sends a message to our legislators that there's a constituency group out there that's advocating for kids, as they communicated to us, they advocate for kids in education. Some things that they gave us in terms of specifics and some information that's interesting to Abington is the Chapter 70 funding question, and the funding of schools is something that they're, they're holding off and they're delaying. They're waiting for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to get them more information. It's back into committee. That's something that's very important to Abington because we, as we looked at the budget presentation, that's driven by the fact that we rely on Chapter 70 money and property taxes. And that's it. And Abington's a veteran community with, with not many, with not enough business or commerce, and so it relies so heavily, the burden on the, on the property owner, it puts us in the situation where we're not a wealthy community that's able to actualize dollars from the property taxes. You know, list any South Shore communities you think of as wealthy communities that do that. And we're not a poor community that receives a lot of Chapter 70 money. We are right in the middle, and that's why we talk about our difficulties with funding. The other piece was in Suzanne Bump's office, the state auditor, she's pushing with a number of representatives and senators, Jeff Deal and Senator Keenan, our two of them, are, are people here for Abington, on a bill, 1062, to improve the funding mandate that, that provides homeless transportation for students that costs us money that couldn't have been foreseen in Massachusetts. And so, we're hopeful, they clearly communicated, they understand that circuit breaker's a priority to school systems, and they want to improve funding for schools through circuit breaker. And that, we really shouldn't be waiting for this bounce in the, in the recovery that it's going to be, I think Michael Widmer described it as an anemic recovery. We won't be able to rely on the capital gains taxes that other recoveries were able to rely on, and the federal government is retreating from funding states. And we are recovering, things are getting better, but we're not going to see this quick recovery that we've seen out of other recessions. That's what I took from my notes in there.
I thought it was interesting that, that Chapter 70, that everybody that got up to ask the questions, same questions that have been asked at our committee meetings over and over again that we've brought up, and same frustrations because they really kind of couldn't explain why they were tabling it, and Ellen and I was saying, you know. They didn't have a good reason for not pursuing it, but just that they... didn't have a good reason for not pursuing it, but just that they were still thinking about it. And then they talked a lot about unfunded mandates and how they don't intend to do that, but yet, right, yet the requirements they set upon us sets up that level. So they're trying to take a look at that even with the teacher evaluations, I believe they mentioned that they're not intending to create more expense for the districts, yet they did by implementing it. So it was good because everybody in the audience had the same frustrations that we have.
So Abington's not alone in complaining about getting money from the state and local governments.
It's like a misery loves company.
Yep.
I thought it was interesting too, how many of the senators and representatives had a background being on a school board. I think at least, at least two or three of them had a history there.
Because they've been there.
They've been there, they've been in our shoes.
Any of you are thinking of running for senator, the house representative, that's how they started?
Yep. Okay. Reporter, the assistant superintendent for Business and Finance, Felicia.
Thank you.
Do you want a microphone?
I'll take the mic rather than sit down there.
Why don't you take the podium?
Thank you though. I do have another Woodsdale window update. I was hoping that, well, no, I actually said last time that we wouldn't be complete, complete at this meeting. We are substantially complete, which is considered 99% complete. We're still going through punch list items. And over April vacation, they'll be making adjustments to the window wall where the cafeteria is. And recently, we passed our commissioning test, which is the water test. They set up in front of the window, spraying water onto the window with a vacuum on the inside, and it simulates like a category four hurricane. And the first time we did it, there was some water penetration, so they actually brought in the company from Pennsylvania to do adjustments on the windows. The second time we did the test, we did not have water penetration. So over April vacation, they'll be making some adjustments to the gaskets there. So that's a school building authority requirement is to pass this commissioning test, which everyone complains are too stringent, but it's a good thing for us to have this. So they'll be completing that over April vacation. We're also, we also noticed after the windows were installed that they actually didn't tilt in but three inches. And part of that was life safety requirement, so people couldn't get out of the window. But upon further investigation, it was determined that actually we could have a little bit of a larger tilt, so it'll be the same, very similar to that of the high school and at Beaverbrook. And the company has agreed also to replace the arms at no cost to us. So that'll be happening also, so there'll be some more airflow in the classrooms after April vacation. So we, I have to say, we've been very happy with working with both the contractor and the architect. Also, part of the contract was that the grounds will be returned to the condition to which the project started. I think everyone was expecting the ground to be frozen throughout the window project, and in fact, we had very few frozen days. So for a while, there were some big gullies from track marks. Those have been smoothed over. And again, over April vacation, we'll be having hydro seating take place in front and in back of the building in the area that had turf damage. So again, I can't speak highly enough of our experience with both MSBA, with the contractors, with the architects. And it feels like it's been a very long project, but it really hasn't been, but it has been, it has gone well.
I want very much to say to you, you did a very nice job yourself, but I'm afraid, because I don't want to say it until the project's finally completed.
Thank you.
So I won't say that.
Thank you.
So what about, since it was so warm last week, what about the window shades?
Oh, shades were installed.
And screens and stuff like that.
Yep, thank you. Shades were installed, I guess probably since our last meeting. So all the old ones were removed, the new ones were put in. Again, they were very similar in design and material to that at both the high school and Beaverbrook because we've been happy with the product. The windows on the backside of the school are also tinted, so with the bright sun coming in, there's also a reduction in heat from that side. I think they'll see, they'll really be reaping the benefits of that as the warm weather occurs. So shades have been installed. The arms will be adjusted over vacation. So that's...
So the windows on the backside of the Woodsdale?
Yep.
They're a different tint than what's on the front?
They are, yep. Because it's a greater sun on that side.
The next item is under Felicia's section, but it's something that I was actually asked about as recently as last night at the Board of Selectmen's meeting. This has to do with making a presentation at a town meeting for the feasibility study. And the finance committee actually asked me, the Board of Selectmen asked me, and I should give you the background for this, both the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen have unanimously voted to support Article 9 at the town meeting, which is the ballot question, the proposition of a ballot question for a feasibility study for the Abbott and Public Schools. And so thinking that it was good for this board to have a public discussion about if there was to be a presentation, what would the key elements of that presentation be, sort of reach consensus on that. And the handout, what would go on that handout is the most important elements. And then just to take a formal motion to support at the end of the discussion, consider a motion to support conducting an MSBA partially funded feasibility study for the construction or renovation of schools in Abington so that the people making the presentation at town meeting can say with all confidence that this board not only supports the question itself, but the conducting of the feasibility study for the Abbott and Public Schools. So it's a clear message, a unified voice from the school committee.
And I think it's important, and you alluded to this, that there's really two pieces to this vote. The first is at town meeting, although it may, could be considered a money article, it will be something that will be voted on on Monday night at town meeting. It won't be one that I believe, the recommendation is not to pass over it, it's to address it on Monday night. So the first vote at town meeting is for the ballot question, and then it'll also be on the ballot. So there needs to be, there'll be two votes in order for the feasibility study to occur.
Because Felicia, if you read the article which I have here, there's no money.
Correct.
No dollar amount involved. It just says, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate borrow or transfer available funds."
Correct. And that is language that was not our language, that was language from the school building authority. And the article itself does not have a dollar amount. The motion that would be presented does have the dollar amount. And that's the $800,000.
So you want to open up a discussion on...
Sure.
Committee members to...
I think it's important, as we head into town meeting, that the community knows where we stand as a board, you know, that we're here representing the schools and, as you said, Peter, you know, taking a roll call vote, as other boards have done, you know, prior to this.
So if we were to make a presentation, what types of things, I think it'd be something, just my opinion and my experience at town meeting would be, you want to keep it short, you know, keep it low tech. And go to the front of the room and hit a couple of points. But I'm interested in what the committee might want to do, and then get consensus around there.
Peter, I talked to you today about, just in mentioning that we should do a flyer to have, for people to have at the back of the room with a couple of questions. And some of the questions that Trish and Ellen and I came up were, okay, the article says the Frolio Middle School. And we don't want it to be only about the Frolio Middle School, we want it to be about a new school building in Abington.
And I think that's, I think that's a broader question. People are going to ask, why does this say this is a feasibility study for Frolio Middle School? And the answer is, obviously we all know, that's because MSBA requires us to, and I'm saying it for the benefit of people on cable, MSBA requires us to enter with a problem and identify a school building for that problem, and then we emerge with a, the most fiscally responsible, educationally appropriate, and practical solution to Abington's school building needs, which could be a high school, a middle school, a middle high school, a kindergarten, a whatever emerges as the recommendation from that study. So that'd be the first, that could be one of the things we clarify.
Clarify.
Clarify the question.
Right, yeah. I think another good thing would be pure factual is provide the age of our schools, you know, and potentially the money that we've spent over the years updating it, kind of like the Woodsdale project and stuff like that.
We could provide that the average age of the Abington buildings is 65 years old with the last school construction, not including window and roof projects, but the school construction 50 years ago.
Whoever's going to present it, I mean, if we present these generalizations, it's going to have to have hard facts so that, you know, somebody raises the hand and says, what year was the center school built? You know what I mean, that that's right there on the top of you, you don't have to fumble for that information.
Felicia.
1938, 37, 38.
He's at the deep end.
I think if we stick to the facts, you know, instead of opinions, and let the town make the decision, we'll be better off there. But we can intercede our personal, I guess, you know, as a group, we, you know, whatever the vote comes out. Like if it's unanimous, you know, they can summarize that along with, you know, we had the unanimous support from the finance committee and stuff like that, whatever the facts are, you know, just outline throughout the entire town process, it's been supported by...
Finance.
Yeah. I don't want to say political, but, you know, your...
Elected board.
Elected officials.
There's another question I was thinking about that I've heard people say, why do we have to do this?
There was a feasibility study done back in 2003.
Right.
Why are we doing another one now?
Well, we can give them the facts that it's a state mandated requirement if we want to get any funding whatsoever from the...
And the MSBA now isn't the same as back in 2003, eight years ago, or...
But we also have made progress with that old report.
Right.
The windows, the Woodsdale, the ECC windows, the roof there, the windows here at the high school.
Capital plans that we submit are all based off of that.
Right. Has been put to use. It wasn't money spent and not used.
Even as we sadly close schools in Abington, they fit into that plan. It's not the way we wanted to follow that plan, but that plan provided the data for the direction to go in in terms of future school buildings. And we followed that plan.
Can we get a potential figure of what the tax implication would be of the $800,000 or our share of it, $400,000? So we get, you know, the average home of $200,000, we'd see an increase of such and such for, I don't know, five years, whatever it would be in terms of, you always like to see numbers, you know.
And then see what's coming off.
And is debt coming off?
Yeah, right.
It's imperative to, if we're going to throw out here, we aren't, you know, this would increase by this, and we also have the backup to say, but this debt is coming off at the same time.
Yeah, I think they could do a show. I think the Board of Selectmen had asked that same question, not last night, but the previous meeting. And usually Leo Provost will do, and he'll show what the debt come off.
They talked about that last week too.
Good.
Anything else?
It's hard to do anything else because we really don't know where we're going at that point, you know?
Can we just talk about just exactly, like step by step? All right, so are we going to get up and do a presentation before the motion? Or is the finance committee going to make a motion, and then we're going to get up?
My experience at town meeting has been, finance committee goes first on each of the article items. Then I think the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager get an opportunity, and then I believe the moderator gives the opportunity to a board who is adding the article to speak on something, and then opens it up. And I think that that would probably follow that format for this.
Yep.
Yeah, I just figured a couple of all around items that I believe are factual that could be for Peter.
Do you want to take the microphone up here, Tom?
Really?
Could you please take the microphone?
What's that?
Could you please take the microphone so the townspeople can hear you?
Tom Dion, 27, Mulberry Drive. But I think a couple of the other factual items that we've talked about before is construction costs are low right now. They're not always going to be low. I think the chief of the feds, Tom Bernanski, came out yesterday, and he's maintaining that interest rates will remain low for the next couple of years. So it's better to do it now when you can borrow in a low interest environment. And I think you've also said, Peter, at some points that this sort of a shelf life isn't there, that if we don't get our act together, that that, you know, I'd say it's big money. I mean, you know, it's going to be 50% or more that coming out of this feasibility that potentially to build new schools or renovate, you know, existing is only going to be for a limited amount of time. So I certainly would introduce that. I have taken a look at some of the property values in other communities, and it's scattered, frankly. I think if you look at Rockland, they seem to be progressing a little bit more than Abington. You need to make that leap anecdotally, whether that's a reflection of some of the investment decisions they have made. But I certainly think the fabric of the community and property values is certainly tied to your education system and other core services. So although that might not be factual, I think people need to make that leap, you know, as they consider this. The other point I'd make is that it will require a two-thirds vote on town meeting floor. So certainly encourage, you know, your supporters of this to come. When it goes to the ballot box, what, 20 days later or whatever, it would just be a majority vote. And then you're, you know, off and running. So those are just my two, a couple of observations.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Yeah, the, when people move into a new town or check out a new town, the first thing they say is, how's the school district? What are the schools like?
I don't know if we want to make that leap regarding, you know, new buildings because it's, in my opinion, it's more of what's in the schools and the buildings themselves and the products you're producing than the buildings themselves, you know. So I think that, Tom, I respect your opinion there, but I think we don't want to go down that road tying directly, you know, new buildings to home values at this point. I think that bears off of the facts. But I do agree, interest rates are low. Bernanke did come out and, you know, drove the markets nuts a couple of days ago, you know, saying that the rate's going to remain low. So it's a good time to strike, probably keep the cost lower overall for the town if it's done within a specified period of time at this point. Plus, like you said, we're on a timetable at this point with this particular project. So we have to act on the feasibility study at this point. We're going to follow this.
I think just to, you know, again, a personal, like you said, Tom, it's your own personal, the value of the house, it's not, and I totally agree, a building doesn't make a school. It's what in, it's what in, what's within. But I also think the communities that are showing that they are putting into their educational system, whether it's, you know, the technology that's within a new school for the students, all of those things factor together. You can't keep the 75-year-old, 65-year-old buildings and expect to compete in today's society. And people that look to real estate, they look at that. Well, that school, the last time they built a school was average years, you know, 65 years ago. How do they value the education of their children? So it does... So it, it does definitely ties together. You can't say, oh, you have your property value A, B, C because we're looking to build, renovate one of our properties. But those are facts that I think, I don't think you necessarily even need to point out, people definitely think of.
Well, they do, but they also look at the tax rate, too. If this project bumps somebody's tax rate up to 1,000, they're paying $7,000, $8,000, you're going to potentially drive people out. So they look at the schools, but they look at the tax rate. It's all, it's all an equal balance, you know? Some people look at different things, you know? I just think as a committee, you want to steer away from making leaps of faith like that. We just want to present the facts. Yep. Also keep in mind that one cent of your sales tax goes into building new schools in the state. And all the surrounding communities around Abington have built new schools, new high schools in the past.
Or currently breaking ground.
Currently drilling, breaking ground for that in the past five, six years. So it's Abington's turn.
So I think I, if I could, I have consensus on those items and Felicia and I could put together something and we could take the home value piece and we could let other people say that?
And someone will.
That doesn't have to come from the school committee?
Yeah.
Does that work? And then I want to, you know, who, who wants to stand in front of their fellow citizenry?
Is, are we all going to be present?
Well, should we take the vote first and then I should ask who wants to do that?
So we need a motion to support the conducting of an MSBA partially funded feasibility study for the construction or renovation of schools in Abington.
How much the motion?
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second, Regina. All those in favor? You know us?
Now the person can say, the school committee, you know, has voted to conduct, we believe we should conduct the study. And who will that person be? Or persons?
Are we all going to be there? I think that means.
I'm available now. I just found out today.
Let's not hash out who's going to do it unless we know.
I think it comes strong, let me say this, I think it comes, it's stronger coming from you than from me. I'm willing to talk to anybody that'll listen to me. Well, we can meet in the parking lot and I can describe feasibility studies to them, anyone who wants to hear. But I think it speaks louder coming from the committee members.
Are you going to go up, though, and answer questions?
I'd be available.
The community, I don't know, just to hear a little feedback, you know, you went to the senior center.
Yep.
You've gone to other gatherings and some people said, well, geez, you know, I don't want to hear. You know, I think they're going to look to hear from you, too, and not just, you know, have you present to select groups. I think you need to present to the community as a whole. Are you going to answer questions?
My friend Felicia and I will be there to answer questions. So does anybody want to?
If nobody wants to do it, I'll do it.
Okay.
We can talk about it.
Then we'll do it? They need to create two people.
Yeah, I think we can both do it.
Yes.
Tom?
Okay. We'll work on, and then we'll work on the flyer and then you can have that as, you can maybe just use that as a talking point. Great, we'll work on the flyer.
Excellent.
Thank you.
And we'll send a draft of the flyer out.
Okay. Good. Next, principal report. Dr. Nicole Rich proposed preschool and pre-kindergarten report cards.
And rubrics.
Yes.
The rubrics.
So first you will notice that the one thing you'll notice is there are two different proposed report cards. So I'll explain what, what that is first. The difference between a preschool and pre-kindergarten report card is because we have children sometimes coming into the program at three years old. Some come in at five years old. So the ones that come into us at three years old are there for three years, sometimes two. And the skills that they're working on are not at the same level to get them ready and prepared for kindergarten, entering kindergarten. They're working on foundational skills and mastery of those foundational skills before getting ready for their pre-kindergarten skills, which are, there is a big difference between them because it is a three-year span. And of course, if anyone knows, you know, three, four, and five-year-olds, you know, there is a big difference between the maturity and development of a three-year-old versus a five-year-old. So the preschool report card is solely for the children that are coming in that are three years or four years old and they, or they will be spending two years in the preschool program. The pre-kindergarten report card is for children that are getting ready to enter kindergarten in the following year. And you will notice the different sets of skills on these report cards. So why, the reason why the preschool teachers wanted or the preschool staff felt it was important to create this report card based on standards. So this is a standards-based report card. It's unique in preschool because we are governed by the Department of Early Education and Care as well as the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Everyone, this year the buzz has been the Common Core for ELA and math that includes preschool. However, preschool has always been included in the curriculum frameworks. It just wasn't extracted more and focused more on just pre-K. In some of the frameworks, it was pre-K to two, pre-K to four. Now in ELA and math, they pulled out more specifically some of the skills for preschoolers. However, one thing that they didn't do was focus on, they don't have three-year-olds built into the frameworks right now. They're addressed in the Guidelines for Preschool Learning Experiences, which is through the Department of Early Education and Care, which is what the preschool has been driven by since 2006. That's what all the curriculum experiences they do in preschool is governed by those experiences and standards. There is a crosswalk between the Guidelines for Early Education and Care standards and the curriculum frameworks. So if you look in the framework, curriculum frameworks, you will see they are linked, the specific ones are linked to the Guidelines for Preschool Learning Experiences.
Crosswalk meaning they make those linkages.
Right, they do. So, so they overlap and they have that, those documents to show that there is that overlap so that everything is covered. So what they did is, the preschool staff, we sat and we looked at the standards. And there are a lot of them. There are just as many for preschool as there is for third graders that are expected and fourth graders. But what we did is we looked at what are foundational skills and what skills do, do they need if we look at the standards? And then what ones build off of that? So we picked almost in each area, a beginning skill and then the skill that it leads up to and what would be the next level for them, instead of having a report card that entails every single standard for them. So the other, the other piece of this that they created were the rubrics. So the rubrics are, instead of the old-fashioned A, B, C, this is a way for parents, mostly at this age, to be able to see what level of development the child is at. Some of them are coming in and it's not yet observed, this particular skill, for many reasons. And that lends itself to that teacher having the conversation with the parent for the many reasons why that skill might not yet be observed. When a skill is secure, that would be considered mastered and they're ready to move on to the next level, whatever that may be, whatever the frameworks actually indicate for them. So that's it in a nutshell. We wanted to have something, especially with the rubrics, is so important because so much more of education now, the grading system revolves around rubrics. It's an easy way for, for parents and students to be able to see what their expectation is and then to know what they're working towards and where they've come. And one thing that we will be doing in the fall, if this is approved, when we have our orientation, is to explain every piece of this to the parents so that they understand. And they may, they can understand, too, why it may not yet be observed. And it could be simply that the teacher has not taught that skill yet in the classroom or they haven't touched on that yet.
What do we currently have in place?
They do have a report card. It's a one-page, very simplistic. And off the top of my head, I'm not sure, there, there's scattered skills from this report card.
This is more intensive or more categories?
Yes, I do believe the one that was created in the past was based on standards, but it wasn't as involved as this one is. They sat with, we first made sure that the Common Core curriculum frameworks are linked into or are seen in the Guidelines for Preschool Learning Experiences. But that's what they use, the guidelines, to drive this because the preschool is NAEYC accredited. We're going to be shifting over eventually, if it's, if it's the right thing for us to do, into the Quality Rating and Improvement System, which is QRIS. The state has not yet fully implemented that across school districts. They're still in the phase of figuring out how it will all work. But because of that, because of QRIS, that's going to be mandated by the state. We needed to have something like this in place because they will be coming in and looking to see if we have this.
So the previous report card, we've just enhanced it. We haven't deleted anything from it.
Right, right. We, we took it and created something that would be, it's more, this is more visual as far as the shapes, like on the pre-kindergarten report card, having the shapes there that are expected, having the actual numerals and the rubric along with it. The old report card did not have a rubric. And this actually has a lot more on it to show that these are things that they're working on and these are the foundational skills that the children need.
When you said we would present this to the parents at the start of our program, would you also present, supply them with a rubric themselves to take home?
Absolutely. That's my, my, my vision is when we first explain this to them, they will have that rubric. And then anytime the, the report card goes home, they'll also have the rubric attached. Because I know that there may be many questions on this rubric as far as if, if it's expected that their child be at this secure developmental range, you know?
I think it's a, it's a good thing to have, even, you know, I have older children, but when he's doing a project and it's easy to refer to, you know, you need to look back at that and see if you're addressing it. But as a parent of a young child, a young learner, you can say, well, I haven't seen that. I haven't seen it in our home setting, so I'm not surprised that they're not yet seeing it in his academic setting.
Yes, and this also brings it back to, we have a lot of parents ask questions of what they should be doing at home. And sometimes they're doing too much and it's over and above. And a lot of times, just explaining, it's, it's these simple things that, that you can do at home. And this will create that strong foundation for all of the, the other skills that will come later on in their school years. And this is what needs to be solidified.
I've got a couple of other questions just on the form. I'm curious as to why it's called pre-academic or academic development when to me it's, it's, to me it screams that it's our basic everyday math skills that we're teaching them. Why are we not calling it, as we call it, you know, ELA, social motor? Is there a reason why it's not?
It's just considered pre-academic because once you get into or, do you mean the pre-academic versus academic?
Just the term itself, the academic.
Academic.
I mean, because these skills are basic everyday math skills that we're, that the children are building on.
Right, you're right. And honestly, there, I don't have an answer for that, only because that is how it's laid out in early, early childhood education. That's, that's what they call it, pre-academic and academic.
I'm just wondering, as we try to create continuity between, you know, from grade to grade to grade, if we're using those terms with our younger parents that, you know, at the, at the school council, we're hearing a lot that, oh, I had, I didn't know about that. So you know, if the terms, if we start using the terms from when they first come to us in the academic setting, it might be a benefit.
Right. A lot of times it could be simply when they write IEPs for any children that are receiving services, the goals are written as academic goals and not specific math goals or reading goals at that level yet. Because that's not, we need to work on every piece of academics with the children and not, not focus just on that one area.
Another question. If you find you have an older, it's on the pre-kindergarten, a child missed kindergarten cut off by, you know, those days. They come to us and within days, they're six, but they're still in kindergarten. What do we, would we still be using this about our mid-year? The child has shown the teachers that they truly have mastered the basic skills just due to their age and the missing of kindergarten cut off the prior year. What would we then use as an instrument to show the parents, you know, at year-end developmental assessment? If at mid-year we were saying, you know, I'm wondering if they've already secured those skills?
They would still need to use this because this, if this is accepted, this is what, you know, the tool and the instrument is that we're using to measure that. However, all, all teachers, so there are sometimes children in classrooms that are above what are on these skills. And so what we would be explaining is that they're differentiating the instruction and they're reaching all the levels and then they, they are providing the challenging work for the children that are ready. But again, we, sometimes children academically may be ready for a higher level skill, but emotionally and socially, they're not. So, so that may be the piece that we're working on more and focusing more on that and just keep refining and capitalizing on those strong academic skills.
Where are we on NACE accreditation? We have way through, we've closed over.
We've submitted the intent to renew. I have to submit the candidacy materials by May 31st. Our accreditation expires December 31st, 2012. Once I submit our candidacy materials, our window for their visit is between June 1st and November 30th. So we'll know typically because preschool will be ending, there's actually a calendar that I'm filling out as part of our materials we're submitting, the days I X off. Preschool's ending on June 5th, so I don't see it as being realistic that they'll be coming that first week at all. My experience with them in the past is usually it's a few months later. So I anticipate September, October. There's, Rockland is also on the same timeframe as us. So I suspect that when they get their phone call, and what happens is we submit, I get the phone call that they've, they've received it. And then I'll get a phone call to schedule, or they'll be calling to, to schedule the window of time. So then again, it will be another window where they'll say, they'll give me a month and then sometimes a two-week timeframe. And then they'll call two days before the visit or 24 hours before the visit is to happen. We won't know the exact date.
Giving some specific examples, like when we maintain attention for appropriate periods of time. So for a four-year-old, they should be able to sit through, you know, a story that's three minutes long, four minutes long.
It's, are you looking at the preschool or pre-kindergarten?
In the pre-kindergarten.
The pre-kindergarten. Generally, the, the attention span for a preschooler would be 20 minutes. So a circle time wouldn't want to exceed that unless it was engaging and active for the children. So that would.